This is the Irving Planning Board meeting for February 11th. If you're calling in on the phone, you'll probably be muted. And if you're on the computer, you'll be muted unless I unmute you and the chairman decides to take questions. There's also a chat in the question box that you can type things into if you don't want to talk. Take it away, Mike.
We'll call the meeting to order at 7:06. All present, could you state your name and present?
Sunhee May, present.
Deb Smith, present.
Mike Schaefer, present.
Brian, present.
And then Brandon Braille is in the audience and it looks like Sergeant Holst is logging in.
Great. So Deb, were you able to do anything with the minutes last time?
I wasn't. I've had kind of a hectic week, so I will have them by our next meeting.
Okay, there was quite a bit we talked about in a short period of time. I'll review them. The mail, I did email it to, it was in the, it was one notice, I think it was from the zoning board of appeals or someone in New Salem. If it was current, if anybody wanted to go, I think it's still, you could listen to it on Zoom if you wanted to, but probably nobody wants to. So that was only mail we had this week. Then the approval not required status, I know Deb had signed it last week and I had signed it.
I'll go in tomorrow, Friday.
People should be there all day, right, Mariah?
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think so. Yeah, and then once we have a quorum who has signed it, then I think that's all you need. And I can, actually, Sunhee, if you don't mind just sending me an email or something, letting me know once you've signed it, because I'm not going to be at Town Hall tomorrow, then I'll know to go in. Monday's a holiday, but Tuesday, I'll probably be able to get that to the applicants.
I'll email you after tomorrow. I'll go in the morning, probably.
Okay. And Mike, you'll probably just have to let me know. I don't know, like, I know that some copies have to go to like the town clerk or whatever. I don't know if you know where those belong, but I don't.
Jackie went through that with Brian and so he can tell you. Yeah, I don't, one gets filed, one goes to town clerk and then they go, I don't know, one of the Mylar gets, I think goes to registry, I'm not sure, you know.
All right, I can ask him or Jackie.
Yeah. Moonlight, I'm glad you could join us. So at 10:00 or so, Moonlight joined us, so we have.
I'm sorry, I was at the police chief meeting and it ran overtime.
I'm glad you could join us, Moonlight.
Did you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
So, next thing I think we want to do was discuss the marijuana bylaw and get some inputs from Sergeant Holst. Is he able to hear us and speak?
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I can hear you. You just won't be able to see me.
Okay, well, can you see us or?
Yep, I can see you, Mike. I can see Moonlight, Mariah, Deb and Sun.
Hey, Mariah, I lost my picture. I can't, oh, now I'm back. Thank you. Hey, Rob, how you doing?
Good.
So I have on screen the the sections of use that we need to fill in. This was, I just took what Peggy had sent us from ForCog and I copied and pasted it into our current use table. So it's the same thing, just in our format.
And I know one of the new things that has come up that I'd like to get your input in is the recreational delivery of marijuana. Is that just what your feelings are on that, Sergeant?
Yeah, so thank you to Deb Smith. She sent over, you know, some stuff for me to research. You know, back in late 2020, they did sign off saying that they were going to start authorizing the delivery service. And the delivery service is pretty strict rules as far as what needs to be followed. You know, as far as two people in a vehicle, it's got to be recorded. It can only have a certain amount of weight of what it is that they're transporting. Obviously, they've got to identify people as being 21 plus to be able to purchase this. And I think all those are great. You know, I'd be, I'd be remiss to not mention, obviously, you know, I teach there at the elementary school. And it's unfortunate that, you know, it's kind of conflicts with, with maybe some personal beliefs that I have. But the rules are the rules, the laws are the laws, and the, the people of Massachusetts have spoken and it's been legalized. And so for that, I don't have any problems as long as, you know, there's a way to enforce that the, that the bylaw that you guys create is being enforced and, and the rules that the Commonwealth have set forth, you know, are being adhered to. So I don't have a problem with it as far as, you know, a legal standpoint, maybe a moral or an ethical one I do, but that's, that's neither here nor there, so.
How, how would it, like, let's say Orange, there's a delivery service out of Orange or Turner's or Greenfield that delivers to Irving. Is that, that, is there anything they have to ask us before they do that? Or is that, can they do that without even any consent from you or anybody?
Yeah, so Mike, great question. And from, from all the research I've done, all this law does is that it, it, it gives guidance to an established business in that town. So a town that has an established business that is already adhering to the laws set forth by the Commonwealth and whatever the town puts on for stipulations, as long as they are guided by that, they are allowed to, to travel throughout the state and make those deliveries. You know, we can't enforce what Orange has allowed an Orange business to do. You know, I would say no different than say if somebody made a taxi service. That taxi service obviously can travel outside of its jurisdiction. That's my understanding. Now, there could be some sort of language in there that I'm not familiar with where if anybody is making one of these purchases, you know, from our town to another town, that there's got to be some sort of documentation. Again, I'm not familiar with that and maybe that deserves more research. But I would be, I would find it hard to believe that we can enforce something like that.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, so there's no, I mean, is it, Moonlight, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Hey, Rob, how you doing?
Good, yourself, Moonlight?
All right. My question is, in trying to keep, now I understand that you have personal difference about the use of this product and whatever. But as, as an officer in the town, does this delivery service imply a demise in Irving culture by having this service come through our town from a police point of view?
I would say no, Moonlight. That's a great question. I mean, what's the difference between a package store or a store that sells cigarettes? I don't think that it, it creates an atmosphere that this town is, is going down a bad, a bad road. I don't think that people drive through here and say, oh, it's ruining the town of Irving's reputation or, or historical view, you know. You know, like, we have, like, you know, nice signage and, and things like that. I think that as Board of Health would, would try to enforce any, any laws that would govern, you know, that, that signage, we're not having big neon lit up signs and things like that saying, you know, catch your pot here. You know, and as long as they're, they're keeping a reputable business the way it looks, I don't see it having a negative impact, you know, on Irving. I do believe that it would create an awareness for the police department to be aware of the business and, and probably more of, you know, I wouldn't worry so much about people going to a coffee shop, but I may pay more attention of who is coming and going from, from one of these, these, this, this type of business. But again, it's legal, so we have to recognize that and, and, you know, encourage that. And we can't be, we can't be discriminating against a store just because maybe it's not what I would recommend and as long as it's keeping, you know, a good reputable business and, and following the rules, I would be in favor of it, Moonlight.
Well, well, thank you for that. I just have one more question and I don't mean to take up any time. And you don't have to answer the question. But there is some concern about a more heavy concentrated dose of, of drugs coming through 63. And I'm just wondering, is that going to add to or take away from what your very, very important job is already?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Not gonna, it, it's not gonna add or take away, sir. You know, we have a job to do. We'll do our job. We'll do the best that we can. You know, I don't think if, if we were to authorize somebody to have, have, have a pot shop in town with a delivery service, you know, I mean, we've already approved the pot shop in town. Now we're just kind of looking at saying, you know, we're going to add this delivery service. You know, we haven't gotten one in town, but I don't think that it would impact our ability. We are fully aware of 63 and the activity that does go on on 63. I think it's becoming the new 91, unfortunately. But we are, we are aware of it, sir, and we'll continue to do a good job, but, but appreciate your comments and questions.
I didn't know that 63 was the new 91.
And I just wanted to add that when Deb and I were looking into this, I know that there's a lot of legal limits of grams you can purchase or have delivered. I think the THC level in the medical marijuana and the social consumption establishments is limited. So the idea being kind of like a serve limit of if you go to a bar, they're not going to serve you if you're drunk already. So that, you know, there's a responsible amount that you're purchasing.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize. Did we, did you talk about the cafe already? I missed that if we did. Was that okay too with, with you Sergeant, like a coffee shop for marijuana?
Yeah, from my understanding, that's already been approved. I could be mistaken on that. That, I believe that that was proved prior to me being in the acting position that I'm in.
Correct. We, well, to be truthful, I didn't think it was approved. Some other members of board didn't think it was approved, but it, the, the legal document says with special permit, you can get it in Central Village and French King. So it's approved with a special permit, which would, I think is a good thing. It gives, you know, the neighborhood a chance to voice any concerns they have. But, yeah.
And Mike, just to, just to add to that, I mean, again, you know, I'm trying to keep my personal opinions out of it and, and, and focus on what the law says. And the law says that it's now legal. I do have one concern though with the deliveries. And it, and again, it's, it's just from a law enforcement point of view is that when somebody goes into a store to purchase alcohol or to purchase something that, you know, you have to be 21, there's a little bit more responsibility there for, for those that are selling it. There's a lot more people that can be viewing what's going on. Most stores are under, you know, cameras, other, other patrons coming and going. It's a little bit more difficult now when we're delivering it to somebody's front yard. You know, I think that they're just, I think there needs to be some real conversation and some, some real oversight of if we do allow this, you know, are we making sure that the people that are purchasing are 21? Are we making sure that the people that are delivering it are, you know, making sure that these people are 21? And what does that look like? I think that opens up for a long discussion at some point, but that would be a concern.
But isn't it, isn't it true that, that in order for something to be delivered before they can even take it out of the possession, they have to see the qualification card, ID and license? And the person has to show all of this before they can even talk about paying for it? So isn't it some stuff in, in lined up? So that that piece of it would be taken care of prior to buying anything? That's supposed to be a windfall for, for people getting home deliveries?
Yeah, you're correct, Moonlight. And again, I guess I just, I would just, you know, how do we make sure that that's getting done? I guess it is just would be, would be the concern. You know, like anything, you know, when we have a package store in town, we don't want people under 21 going in there and just buying alcohol. So yes, that, that is, you're, you're correct. And again, it's just, what, what does that oversight look like, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of inter, I just read some town where they send in like an undercover kid that's like 18, that looks like he's 25. And then when they sell it to them, they, they bust the guy. But, you know, I don't know if they're going to do that, you know, I don't know what they'll do.
Sergeant, does the CCC offer law enforcement guidance on enforcing the new laws?
I'm sorry, can you, I didn't see who, who asked that. It was, was it Deb? Can you, can you go again? It glitched out on you.
Yeah. Does the CCC offer guidance to law enforcement on how to enforce the new laws? Like, do they give you instructions of like, we made this law, here's how we think this is enforceable?
Not that I'm aware of. It's Massa, we follow under Massachusetts law. So the CCC could be making recommendations to the, to the legislation and the legislation would then be, I would not be so much focused on what the CCC is saying as more as what our legislation is saying. So I don't, I don't want to say that, no, our legislation isn't taking some, some consideration what the CCC is saying, but local law enforcement, or I should say at least at my level, we are not.
I guess, does like then the, does the MGL, like, do you get any kind of guidance from anyone, I guess, on enforcement?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I was just going to add, for deliveries, not only do you have to have, it's my understanding, everything's set up as to your identification and such ahead of time, you do have to present ID when your product is delivered. And I will say, I Instacart, we have alcohol delivered via Instacart. We actually have to meet the Instacart driver. I, the Instacart account in my name, excuse me. So I have to actually present my driver's license and they have an app on their phone where they have to scan it. And if they can't scan it, then they actually are not allowed to leave the product. And the grocery bags or the bottle, whatever it is, actually has a big bright orange, you could see it from the space station label on it that says this product may not be delivered to anyone under 21 years of age. And I believe it's a very similar process for delivery. And just, I think Sergeant Holst touched on something really great about signage. It's my understanding, the vehicles cannot actually be signed. So they couldn't put on it like Mariah Kurt's delivery service. Or if it is, it's a very, it can't be like, you know, wrapped in pot leaves or anything like this. It would have to be like a very miniscule kind of thing. So it's not like people would see the van going up the street and it's the same too for stores. They are, they're very regulated as to how and what they advertise.
Pizza delivery too tied to it, so, you know.
Do you guys have other questions for Sergeant Holst?
Those were my two main concerns. Thank you. Anybody else?
Quick, so is it currently getting delivered now? Do you know?
I'm not familiar with anybody that is having, having it delivered to their houses, no. I do know people that are going to, you know, the, the Miller's Falls, the one over on Miller's Falls Road and stuff like that. I do know people in town and, and I have, you know, friends and family that, that, you know, are, are involved in that. But nothing that I'm aware of that is being currently home delivered. Nor am I familiar with any vehicles and what they do look like. And I think that that speaks to Ms. Smith's point that, you know, it is low key.
My, my understanding is that Orange and Miller's Falls both have delivery businesses that are like about to open, I think. At least the one in Miller's Falls was just approved not too long ago. The one in Orange might already be functioning, I'm not sure.
Yeah, this was just signed, I want to say December of 2020. So I mean, I think, you know, obviously, here we are only early February, so places have got to get up and running. And I got, I'd be willing to bet that it's pretty stringent. And, you know, to the point of, of everybody getting, getting checking licenses to, you know, Moonlight's comments and to Deb's with the alcohol being delivered, I would be willing to bet that most people are really going to be pretty, pretty strict. I don't think that they want to start losing their licenses and stuff like that. And I think that they're probably going to think it's going to be pretty heavily watched. So I would be willing to bet that most people are going to be, you know, careful. And, and I guess, again, I don't say that people aren't, I just, I don't know what that oversight looks like as far as what it would look like from a law enforcement standpoint at this point. I don't know what that would look like.
Sunhee, I'd like to answer your question.
Yes.
All right, your question is, are they making deliveries in Irving now? To the best of my general knowledge, they are not. And if they are, they are so low key and so experimental that nobody even knows what cars or, or anything. And not that I personally would be looking for it, but just in general, from hearing the talk around town, it hasn't, it hasn't developed into a working service yet. So Irving is still not doing that kind of thing.
Okay, it's just, you know, and even if they did, like, like Sergeant Holst said, it is legal, it is legal. It's just to be aware, I guess, have awareness or whatnot.
Yeah, the only, the only deliveries to Irving are illegal ones right now. I'm just kidding. We, we have a good town here. We really do.
It's still a town of 1,400, right?
800.
1,800 now.
Wow.
It's grown.
Mariah, to your point, I think Miller's is up and running. The few times I've driven by there, there's always someone in that office space. The lights are on and it looks like it's been revamped like right now a little bit. So I'm going to bet they are probably actually up and running.
Yeah, I think the other thing to just keep in mind, like I think Sergeant Holst said at the beginning of this conversation, that this, the zoning that you're all discussing is only having that business in town, not whether they can deliver to it. So I think that's just important to keep in mind is that you're talking about a brick and mortar place and where that can be located and not where they can deliver in town.
Correct. Yep, excellent point, Mariah. Thank you for reinforcing that. Yep.
I do know that there's a French King Bridge public hearing listening session thing going on and I'm imagining that Sergeant Holst probably wants to be able to pop into that, so.
That's actually over, that's actually over, Mariah, but I appreciate it. That is over, so.
Okay.
Well, I don't have any more questions. Appreciate you. And adding the best joke of the night.
Thank you, Sergeant.
All right, everybody. Good luck. If you guys need anything further, don't hesitate to text me or email me or however you guys want to use. You can use Mariah, Deb, or anybody can get ahold of me at any point.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Do we want to continue on this now and try to fill in the blanks or? What's the feeling?
So it's all the red, right? So it would, I would think it's all special permit, most special permits?
Well, we allowed permit in Central Village and French King for the, according to this from the cafe. For the retail marijuana store, we only allowed it in Central Village.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Deleted, this is not empty. I just have to fill that in. I'm not sure why it accidentally deleted that. So it's just these three right here.
These three you're talking about? Okay.
Yeah, so it's the medical marijuana treatment center, the micro business and the delivery only retailer.
But I'm just wondering where we allow a store was only in one area and then we allow a cafe in two areas? Which.
Well, the French King district is this one.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me we should change that no to an SP and, in French King. Does that make sense to people? I mean, how can you allow people to have a cafe and not have a store?
But it does make sense, Mike. If you're going to have one, you can have the other. So it could be an SP, but it's still by special permit, so it makes it still up to us to who do we agree to have in it?
Right. You have more to say about it.
Do you want me to put an SP there?
Sure, I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, hold on. The one above it is a bigger.
A retail store?
That's greater than 5,000 square feet. And I think in French King for a regular retail store, I think you have, hang on.
Okay.
Oh, so, right, so these are excluding and then the bottom one is including. So these are retail stores, 2,500 square feet or less, not including anything marijuana related. You have yes in CV, special permit in French King. This is a regular retail store, no marijuana, 2,500 square feet to 5,000. This is a building greater than 5,000 square feet, no marijuana. And then this one is a marijuana store up to 5,000 square feet.
Well, shouldn't that be by special permit as well?
Yeah, I think so.
Special permit, yes.
The next one up too, right?
No, yeah, the next one up.
Oh.
That should be a special permit too.
Yeah, I think, I, I think it should be the same for, I don't know. Yeah, I, I would.
Changing that in the French King commercial district would mean somebody could come in and buy special permit, build a 10,000 square foot store. Would we be okay with that?
I don't think so, Deb. You're right. I don't think. I don't think so, Deb. You're right. I don't think, uh, not that big.
Oh, okay. No, no, you're right.
Not that big.
I thought that was related to marijuana, but it's not, right?
No.
That's, okay, no, then leave that as no. I'm sorry. Thanks, Deb.
And where would they put this, Deb?
That would be like a big Walmart or something going in.
Right.
Okay, that's definitely no.
All right. So then what do we want to do for all these other ones? That, that was a medical marijuana dispensary, so that, I think we thought could be SP for the first two, right?
So wouldn't it be SP for the medical marijuana treatment center in Central Village and the King, French King? And the same marijuana micro businesses also in Central Village and French King? And SP in the marijuana delivery only retailer also in Central Village and the French King?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't, self-storage, I don't, what's that?
No, that's, that's not edit, well, I mean, you can edit it, but it, it shouldn't be blank. It's because it accidentally, when I inserted these, deleted that. So did you want no for these other zones?
I, I would say so. I, if it's all right with everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't have any, yeah.
You think the rural residential people will want to have like a business, like a micro business on their land with the special?
I, I, Sonny, I think you're on to something. I think for um marijuana micro business and marijuana only, I actually be more apt, for delivery, I would be more apt to special permit it across the board for all our districts. Just the one in Miller's is like three or four doors down from Carol's Market. It's just an open office. There's some actually quite pretty lights hanging from the ceiling. Um, and, and it really is just a place for them to park their trucks and have their office. Um, so taking out.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I don't have a, too much of a problem with that. I don't know. But what, what else have we left in rural residential? What do we allow for businesses in rural residential? I mean, if you go through the rest of the table, I'm sorry, not just for marijuana, but.
You've got farm stands, you've got hobby kennels, you've got motels and hotels and inns by special permit. You've got nursing homes by special permit, daycare centers for children, um, daycare centers for adults, um, educational uses, wildlife preserves, commercial recreation, uh, bed and breakfasts, commercial greenhouses on a lot greater than five acres. I think that's the bulk of it. Some else?
I'm okay with saying special permit there across, would you go across the board then with it? Is that what you said, recommended, Deb?
I would for delivery, I would go across the board and for a micro business. Um, I don't necessarily, can't really think of anywhere in Village Residential where I could see that type of business, but I could definitely see it in a rural residential setting. So micro business, I would special permit. Okay.
And what is that again?
Think of something, Mike, are you familiar with like Element Brewery over in Miller's?
No, yeah.
Someone like that. So somebody who maybe has 20 acres of land, they get the permits to grow a small amount. Maybe they cultivate one or two specific strains. And so it would be kind of like a, a farm stand. That might be a bad example to equate it to, but it's really that kind of thing, not someone who's so big that they want a big commercial business, but somebody who wants to keep it on a really small level.
But Deb, I got my question for you is how does that, how is the reaction of that kind of establishment to the locals? Is it, is it available for, for individual purchase? Is it locked off and closed away so that it only gets to cer-, you know? How does that work in a, in a, in a, in an area like that?
I believe, Moonlight, it would be all determined by what exactly they're applying for. Um, so if they're applying just to grow, if they're applying to be, you know, a kind of a farm to table, grow it and, and produce whatever the product is. Um, I think it would be determined within their application and then we would have the opportunity to review it. And of course, with the special permit process, it gives the neighbors and the residents in that area the opportunity to weigh in.
Okay.
I was gonna ask about the abutters because they might have something to say about it too.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you're in Village Residential, don't you feel you're getting left out?
Kind of, but I know, Mariah, can you think of anywhere in VR areas where this could work? I'm just thinking like, um, I'm thinking that, I don't think there's anywhere with a property where this might, where that could fit.
Well, my thought is could someone have it be at their house? So if I wanted to grow five plants at my house and process that and make it into can of butter or something, can I register as a micro business and sell on Etsy my can of butter or to my neighbors or whatever?
I think not. I think not. I think that you can make it because we, the, the state says that you're allowed to have a certain amount of plants in your personal possession. And what you do with those plants is your business. What, when you start making what you do with that public, then it, it runs across the guidelines of the regulations for regulating marijuana and marijuana products.
Right, but that's what I'm talking about. So like as a, as a person, if I want to make can of butter, I would have to gift it to my friends and family or my neighbors or whatever. I couldn't make a profit off of it. But if I registered as a micro business, I can make whatever in my kitchen and then sell it online or, you know, I guess you can't really sell it online right now. But I can sell it, you know, like Deb said, kind of to your, your neighbors or your friends or your family. Um, and you can make money, but you're a micro business, kind of like Element Brewing, where they're, they're selling to the public, but it's not a huge operation. I'm imagining it's kind of similar. We have a lot of um home businesses here in town. Um, like, uh, I'm imagining, uh, Jeff Rollins has a, a gun business, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So he's, he's doing that out of his house, but it's a business. He's making money and dealing with that. He still has to follow the guidelines of, I want to sell a gun, I need to follow the rules of if anyone else was keeping multiple guns as a commercial industry, but it's at his house.
So I think this may answer it. I just pulled up the form we got from Peggy that has the descriptions. Um, so a micro business is co-located marijuana establishment that is either a tier one cultivator or product manufacturer or both. Um, pursuant to chapter 935, blah, 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 that's MGL, in compliance with.
It's kind of a bigger thing then, right? You said it's a cultivator.
It's in, in compliance with the operating procedures for each license. A micro business is a marijuana product manufacturer. They may purchase no more than 2,000 pounds of marijuana per year.
Well, that's a big bunch.
So I don't know if 2,000 is a little or a lot.
2,000 is a lot.
Okay. So my thought is exactly what I kind of just described. If someone is processing their marijuana into a product and selling it, um, whether they're growing it themselves or purchasing it elsewhere, they're, you know, can of butter or whatever, uh, tinctures and then selling it.
All right, so let's see. Well, how about the distances that these have to be away from neighbors and stuff? Or can they, can they be anywhere? I mean.
You still have to follow the rules of CCC, which I imagine they probably have some setbacks, but I don't know that for sure.
And now our setbacks, can we go, I, does that apply to everything in the table that we, we put up? The setbacks? Somewhere we have our distances from schools and things like that, I think.
Yes.
No, I don't think it would be there, would it? Maybe. No, I thought it was more to do with the marijuana bylaw.
Yeah, they're in the marijuana.
What was that, Deb?
We actually have, um, it should be section eight of our zoning book has the marijuana bylaw. I think it's section eight.
What is it, 2.8?
Uh, four, hold on, I've got it right here. Uh, marijuana bylaw is section, oh, I am leading you astray. It's 4.12. I thought our setbacks were in here.
Sorry if I'm making you seasick. Okay, here it is. Definitions.
412, 1.4 speaks to schools, parochial, public or private.
Um, oh, yeah. You had talked about reducing. Sorry, Deb.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm going to excuse myself for one second.
Okay.
So let's see. Um, so within a public, parochial, private school, we have a 500 foot setback. Uh, located from public recreation areas, um, is 100 foot. And 50 feet away, a marijuana establishment may not be located within 50 feet from any existing residential use. Oh, I think that.
I just wondered, does this apply to everything we just added special permits for? That, that was my question.
Yes, um, I would assume so because the, the, the title of the chapter is requirements regarding the allowed locations. So yes, I would assume it did.
So a lot of areas, you're not gonna be able to, you know, there are very few areas that would have met the original guidelines we put in. So I, I don't know if we, I don't have enough knowledge to tell you what the right numbers are here. I don't know.
I will say, I've tried to do a little homework on this because I think some of our setbacks are a bit extreme. And I know, um, Jackie expressed concern, there was someone interested in, everybody calls it something different, the old Christina's property.
Right.
Um, right on the curve there on two.
Right.
But there was some problems because of setbacks. It wasn't a viable property. Um, so I did look, a lot of the towns, I didn't think to write down the name of the towns that I was, I looked at, mostly were all local. It seems like within a near a school, public or parochial, a lot of places were anywhere between 3 to 500. Um, parks and such were anywhere from 50. I actually found one town that was 200. Um, and at residential, it seemed to be pretty consistent that it was around 50 feet. Um, but again, I, I think, I think our bylaw needs to get looked at a little bit because I don't understand why we're not getting any interest. And I'm wondering if these setbacks are kind of a negative and affecting that. And I just hate using out on the money.
What I heard, heard that it affected was Chris, Christine's. That's only negative in that, and then Jackie said they could buy the, they were looking at buying the adjacent property to get a, you know, but yeah, it wouldn't have met the, this criteria, so, uh.
So I have a question. I, I have a small question. The question is, do any of you have any kind of general knowledge of what the actual footage is of Christina's to the curve in Route 2? And I think that's what we're talking about. Is that not?
No, I think it was the di- distance to the neighbor. That was the problem in that case. Um, yeah. So I don't know what, it, it looks to me like it had to be 50 feet. Evidently, it wasn't 50 feet. I don't know what, you know, it might be, we could do it to try to help make that viable for that, that uh purpose.
About is you can't zone to make one property do something. So whatever you zone, you need to feel that way about all of the properties. So I think you can use that as an example, but.
Redo it and then find out you did. That still doesn't make it. That's my, my only reason.
So the property on the map is right here at the, where the, where the yellow dot is?
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's it.
That's where the building is, right here.
Yeah.
And I believe this was the house that was too close, or I can't tell if that's the house right there.
I think that's the house there.
That's the house. I believe that was too close, Mariah. I think it's a little, right, yeah, right where your cursor is.
What house is that?
It's a little white house. And if you come up, um, from, if you're coming up through the mill, for years, honestly, I thought it was the back of Christina's till I realized it was not. It's a, there's a white, little white house there.
Oh, wow.
There is an apartment underneath Christina's too, but um, so I don't, they wouldn't be able to rent that out, I don't think, but. So whatever that distance is would be a, probably we ought to know.
I mean, is there, is there any way? Because I like the idea of putting that property on the market to attract some business attention. But if we made the distance shorter, how else would we hurt the zoning that we did in that area? I mean, would it be so bad?
What's that, 28 feet? Is that what it says?
It's 88 feet, but that's from building to building. I don't know where the lot lines are. It could be like, that's 27.
Yeah, I think it's from the end of the lot to the, their building has to be 50 feet.
Yeah. I know that they talked about purchasing. I don't know if it was this over here or something, but whatever it was, it wasn't going to work or, or they didn't want to sell it or something.
Well, they could find something cheaper somewhere else, you know?
So I think, uh, if I'm understanding where you're at with the conversation, you shouldn't think about Christina specifically. It's a good example. But in general, whether these are setbacks that are too large, you know, whether you're talking about IP mall, whether you're talking about something in Irving Center, um, I'm thinking, say, the Crooked Tap building. Um, whether you're talking about something on the other side of town, um, in, in a building that maybe is not, not currently a commercial building or is an empty lot. Um, it could be in any of, any of those spots.
Yeah, the Crooked Tap, you would be right next to another building, right? I mean, this, across the street. They all, I don't, I don't even think you could get close enough. Well, I, I don't have a good enough knowledge to recommend, I mean, 350 sounds okay to me. I, I just don't know. I mean, I don't have. Anybody else have any thoughts? I, Deb, you think the, these numbers are, are these the numbers you came up with, Deb and Red? Or are they, what are they?
No, I think they were ballpark that Mariah came up with. Um, I'm okay with them. I, you know, I live, the, the park at first, when I first saw the 50 feet for the park, I was like, uh. But I, this is my neighborhood. Um, the park is hidden. You know, so like thinking of the Crooked Tap location or something like that. I'm really not worried, you know, if anything, you know, say, for example, the Irving Station changed hands and it no longer became a candy store, which would be awful. Um, you know, that could be something else and it wouldn't qualify because it abuts the park, but it abuts the park. It wouldn't qualify because it abuts the park, but it abuts the park via a railroad crossing. You know, the tracks are right there. So you can't really see anything. Um. I think fifty feet is fine. I did look into the alcohol laws because I thought that was the only place where you could kind of bring a comparison of these type of things. A lot of people always say there's a law that, that a packy or a, anything, a bar has to be five hundred feet away from a school. That's a misnomer. It's a guideline and it can, you just simply have to apply to be within that zone. Um. So for me thinking, I might have a different perspective because I've been working so closely with Mariah on the zoning and our properties. So seeing a lot of our actual properties. And how close some are, how chopped up some are, I think we have to be really mindful of setbacks. And that it's a, using setbacks are a really easy way to exclude a lot of things. Because some properties just simply can't handle them and they're properties where we may want stuff to encourage this type of growth. So I mean, personally, to me, I'm okay with what I'm seeing here.
I also want to be clear. I just made up these numbers out of thin air. And it sounds like Deb has done research and found ranges. So these are not, the numbers that I have here in red were not like educated opinions. They were just like, these are numbers that seem like they might be right. So it's good to hear from Deb that like. Three hundred and fifty is between three hundred and five hundred, which she found other towns to have. Um. And so it, it was good to hear confirmation that that's not unreasonable. So don't feel like you have to go with what's in red. You can pick four hundred. You, you can pick whatever you want. You can choose to not change it. Those were just ideas.
I won't go to a thousand. No, I, I, I don't think, I, I like the three fifty. I think that's okay. I, the, um. I know a lot of the towns, they, they've given variances anyhow to even the five hundred, like in Holyoke and places. They, they had that and then they still allow it within, they were a collivator. Um. Fifty feet from a public. Recreation area. And these. I don't think I have any, it's all going to be with special permits anyhow, right? Um, for that. And the marijuana, I don't know, twenty five feet from an existing house. I, I do have more problems with that one. I don't know. I don't, so on here, you probably wouldn't like someone coming in and putting a marijuana factory next to your.
Right, right, right. That's a. I, this is the one I found where everybody, it was at fifth, pretty much fifty feet, pretty much everywhere I looked.
Yeah.
Um, it didn't really seem to deviate a whole heck of a lot from that.
I think that's the one that's keeping Christina's from being viable. Well, the way it is.
It, it's at fifty feet right now. So if you change it to twenty five, it would be more viable.
For Christina's, but that's, that would be putting it awful close to a lot of, you know, I, I think a lot of people might not like that.
Well, that was my question, Mike. That was my question earlier.
Yeah.
You know, the fifty feet or the twenty five feet. And if we made it twenty five feet, what else in the zoned area would we be messing with?
Right. A lot probably, because twenty five is.
And, and like Mike said, people can always apply for variances. So I, I think that's the balance that you have to have is. You could, you know, you can keep this fifty feet, but maybe the setback from the school you reduce because five hundred feet, if someone sees that, they might say, well, I'm never going to get a variance because this town does not want this here at all. So I think you have to be, you have to show like, i- if you want certain kinds of businesses, you can kind of show, look, we're, we're amenable to this, but we want to be reasonable. Um, and you have these rules in place. So I think you could. Keep that as is. And if you wanted to reduce this to three fifty, I think that sounds fine. I don't know about the parks. If you want to go somewhere between fifty and a hundred and make it seventy five and cut the difference, or if you want, if you're comfortable with fifty.
I think Deb's explanation about the railroad track and that that little park across the street is so far hidden that it's not a part of it, that, yeah, we could use the fifty feet there. I agree with that.
I'm okay with fifty feet.
Yep.
All right. We're not going to get through much tonight, I don't think, other than this, but it's, uh. Do we have more to cover too in this?
So I think one of the things that we should talk about is that email that I sent out because, uh, it'll be a big change if you guys are just doing this.
Well, let me, let's, uh, go back. Okay, so your email, do you want to go through what you sent out for an email today? Uh, and it was more what we're going to try to do first and, and get ready for the town meeting, right? That's the main.
Yeah, um, I. Here, I'll pull this up. So.
You sent something out today, Mariah?
No, it was yesterday, I think. Uh, here, I'm going to stop sharing my screen for one second, uh, just so that I can have my notes in front of me while I'm talking. Um, so when we met back in August, you guys kind of picked out things that you thought we could do in this amount of time. And unfortunately, you know, things kind of ended up rushed towards the end here. So one of the things that was really pushing us to have some zoning changes ready for annual town meeting in May was the floodplain bylaw. And this week, Brian and I found out that. For Cog is not comfortable having the building commissioner be the, um, floodplain administrator, just, just saying yes. They want to have a conversation about it with the entire county because every single town is going to have to make this change. So that conversation is not going to happen on the timeline that you all need to have this approved by. Um. The language in the floodplain bylaw adoption. Suggestions, guidelines, recommendations, whatever they're called, is that you make these changes as soon as convenient. And Brian and I's interpretation of that, in, after talking with Joy, was at your next annual town meeting. But if it's not convenient because we don't have, uh, we still have to have this conversation about the administrator, then I think that that will be sufficient for us to hold off until either a special town meeting or next year's annual. So without that pressing this, you know, whole thing to happen at the annual. I think that the select board may be amenable to you all having a special town meeting to discuss bylaws specifically at one point, either in late summer or early fall. Um, and if not, waiting until next year's annual. That would buy you guys enough time to. Make changes that you all feel comfortable with. I know Moonlight had some changes that he wanted to make that we didn't even get to. I know Mike had changes with the special permits that he wanted to make that you didn't get to. Um, and not that you have to do everything in one go, but it would give you another six months to have more meetings, discuss all the changes. Um, and do that. And all of that being said. You could still choose to do, um, some changes right now, like the PUD. The only thing with the PUD change is if you approve. Um, the PUD bylaw language, you then have to have the map match that. So you would also have to approve map changes at the same time. Um, and I attached to that email the draft map that, um, Ryan at For Cog had put together. Um. And it had a whole bunch of changes on it, not just the PUD. So if we wanted to just make PUD changes, it would be a little bit, um. We'd have to have him go back and just turn off the other new layers and that, I don't know how that would work, but.
That would be my recommendation. If we want to do it for the town meeting, the PUD, which was what I wanted to try to do. Uh, go, just do the PUD and don't make the other changes. Do those later.
So if you do any changes at annual town meeting, we will have to re-figure out the schedule for the public hearings because. Um. Because we're here where we are. Uh, you have to have all of the changes finalized. And so. My concern with doing the PUD changes now, I, personally, I would love to see us make these PUD changes happen at annual town meeting. I think that they're really important and that they need to, this needs to happen. My concern is about having enough time to do all of the legal requirements to make that happen. Um, and given that it'll probably be me who is trying to make all of those deadlines, I. I'm not sure that we will be able to. Um, I, I think, I think we could try. And if you guys feel strongly that you want to make that happen, I'm happy to work with you to try to make that happen. But looking at the requirements of, of when we have to run legal ads, we'd have to have Ryan finalize the map. You would all have to vote on the language and make that recommendation to the select board. We would have to print the maps and the packets and have them available at the library in the town hall. Um, we have to advertise to everyone in town to look at them. So.
For, for being March, right? Because February, we're practically over with February with me, you know. March, April, and then May's the town meeting, right? So that's.
Yeah, and, and all of that has to happen in the next, really the next three weeks. Um, because Brian has to have everything starting to be drafted and, and presented to the select board in like three, four weeks.
Short period of time for all of that to happen.
I don't think we have enough time.
That's a lot. Seems.
Can we do the parts we've already moved on?
What was that, Mike?
The parts that we've already approved, the purpose and the, the zoning table. Is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, because then you're not waiting for a map. Um, you would. You would only be printing the new use tables, which is easier. Um, you still have to hold the public hearing, which still requires the advertising, but we wouldn't have to wait to advertise to get the map. So I think, I think that's more doable if you wanted to do the purpose statement and the use table.
I'm all right with that. Those will help do a lot of the affordable housing things that we wanted to do. And, and that will be kind of confrontational too with, you know, auxiliary building units by, I guess by special permit is what we're doing, right?
You're touching on something, Mike, that I, I wanted to bring up. We, we originally, um, had agreed that we actually weren't going to move forward with ADUs attached or detached until we had policy for them. Um, so I'm a little concerned that we put them in our use table and now we have no policy for them. So someone who wanted to build one has to follow the state guidelines, if my understanding is correct, which may not be what we want here in Irving. Um, you know, that means I could go out, get my permit and potentially put up a twelve hundred square foot building in my backyard. Um, and. So personally, I'm a little concerned moving forward with ADUs until we actually have policy written for them.
Well, I, they should be, I would say under ten thousands. No, two, one thousand, well. Is it, yeah, ten hundred square, a thousand square feet, nine hundred to a twelve hundred square feet is what most of them are.
Usually the, uh, Greenfield, I believe, hasn't been less than a thousand or nine hundred. Um, twelve hundred square feet is like the size of my current house.
I don't think we need, we can write a policy. What else do we need?
So you have. What was that?
Is we would need an actual bylaw for them. I believe that's how Greenfield's is passed. They're passed via bylaw. Um, so someone goes, just like our marijuana bylaw, it just becomes, you know, the ADU chapter of our zoning.
Let me pull up Greenfield because I think I have it saved. Um, they have a section that describes what you're saying. Um. Hold on. They basically describe what they, you know, how many parking units. Um. One nineteen, how big it can be, what, uh, whether the owners have to live on site. Um. Whether it's attached or detached, what the difference is.
The owner thing is a big thing though, that the person who built it can't sell both properties, right? I, I can't, I mean, that's pretty important. They have to live in one of them.
Can you make it a little bigger, please?
I can. Is that good? Or you want bigger than that?
A little bit. I'm sorry. I don't have my glasses on.
That's okay. So these are the definitions. Um, basically with, uh, and, uh, they have it within attached and detached. So a within would be like if you converted your basement into an apartment, it's within your house. Attached would be if you're putting an addition on and then detached is, uh, like a, imagine like a shed that is an apartment.
And.
And let me know if you want me to scroll down. I think they have other things.
Is this the wording that we would use?
I mean, you could edit it as you want it, but you would need some kind of a definition so that people knew. Because like right now on the use table, you have an accessory dwelling unit attached. Well, someone needs to know what that means. So you would need some kind of a. A definition like this. And then down here, um, they have kind of standards or requirements. So they have that it shall be a complete separate housekeeping unit containing a kitchen and bath. Um, it may be created within a single family home or a two-family home or on a house lot. Um, the owner of the residence must continue to occupy one of the dwelling, at least one of the dwelling units as their primary residence. It must be compatible in design with the primary residence. Um. The maximum gross floor area shall be nine hundred square feet or one third the total gross floor area of the largest existing unit in the home, whichever is greater.
That created issues there because if you have like a five thousand square foot home, you could build like a, you know, fifteen hundred square foot. I'm still worried about. So I wouldn't, I would recommend we keep it to either nine hundred or a thousand square feet. Be somewhere in there.
Yeah, um, a minimum of two, but no more than four off-street parking spaces for the, for the whole, um. The whole two houses, the two units. So it would be four total maximum. Um. It must be in conformity with the building code, the state sanitary code and fire prevention regulations. One thing that I don't think we would make now, but one thing that I have, um, I would like to research is the state sanitary code. That basically means that you have to be hooked into plumbing, which I have personal grievances with, but I need to better understand what is legally required. Um, so that basically excludes composting toilets. Um, which can, if you're trying to do more of an off-grid type thing, it makes that harder. Um, but for now, I don't think Greenfield has that problem because we don't have many places where you could go off-grid.
I think that would be a good idea.
Prior to issuance of a permit, the owner must send a notarized letter to the appropriate permitting authority stating that, um, they occupy one of the dwelling units. So that's their way of enforcing that someone is on the property, um, is your notarized letter. And then basically it's, I don't know if it counts as perjury if you're lying in a notarized letter or what, but that's their way of saying you do live here. Um. This talks about selling it. And who is able to retain ownership of the unit and, um, who's living there. Um. Permitting. In order to permit, a floor plan must be submitted. Uh, the board of health has to inspect it if it's on a septic system. Um, oh, and then to allow for accessibility, there may be reasonable deviation from. Oh, and then to allow for accessibility, there may be reasonable deviation from the. The building code or, or suggestions, just basically to make it accessible.
Brian, not to cut you off, um, just one point about selling. I don't know if it's happening in Massachusetts, but in other places where ADUs have been allowed, they're finding that people are selling the unit. But not the land that it sits on. So effectively they're making it operate like a condo. So I think that's one thing that we need to be mindful of and maybe have, I'm not seeing it here in Greenfields. But discuss and determine whether we want that to happen or not. Cause that's kind of a way to build one of these things and then make a big profit on it by selling it.
They, what do they do again? They, they build a condo and then they, they rent it.
They build the building. And they sell the structure. So like if you own a condo, you don't actually own the land. You just own the structure. So in some other places, they're finding that that's what's happening is people are building the house. Selling the actual structure and then it's operating basically like a condominium. So if the person who was, who bought it was living in it, they have to offer to sell it back to the homeowner first. Before they're allowed to sell it elsewhere. So it's, it, like they're finding in some places, it's an interesting way for an owner to make a big cash grab. Cause they build this house and then they can turn around and sell it for a profit. You know, and then it's, and it's under the laws. If you have condominium laws, it's actually totally legal to do. Under the ADU laws unless it's explicitly not permitted.
Okay, okay. So I mean, somebody could take advantage of that.
Doesn't the owner still have to live in the other house, right? I mean, I, what's the difference between that and building a, an auxiliary unit? And then having somebody live there and pay you rent or something?
Because you're actually selling it to that other person.
Right, but I think what is the difference in terms of like the neighbors or someone like that? Like I can see how in a place like Newton or on the Cape. If you're jacket, it's jacking up the price of small units. But in a place like Irving, if someone buys a unit versus renting it. I don't understand what the difference is.
I guess to me, that's not the purpose of what an ADU is supposed to be. And so personally, I feel like it's a fancy way to thwart the, the regulations. To me, an ADU is something that you're doing because you need a little extra income. Or your parents or, or you know, you're trying to have multi-generational housing. Um, or maybe you have a situation where you have someone who has special needs, but they'd like to have their own place. To me, it's not meant to be something where I go throw up my 900 square foot home in my backyard. And I sell the house. I also think it's a way for people to subdivide their properties without legally subdividing the property. So I just, and then I would have some other type of concerns where. If you're having, if there is problems, if, if it's hooked into plumbing, you know, just. It just for me, it's a way for people to thwart regulations and it's just not something I'm personally comfortable with. And I think it could open up some issues.
Yeah, I never thought about it that much, but this is a good start anyhow.
So do you want me to, I can try to get from Greenfield. An editable version of this so that I can copy and paste and then you all could make edits as you see fit based off of this.
I'd like to try to get this done for the town meeting if we have to. You said we need it to go with the tables, right, Deb? That's your recommendation. We have, we have to have this language to go with the, the table.
I'll be honest, I don't think that's gonna happen.
We had said before that we wanted to do.
It won't happen.
You might even have to. Have the language written and approve it in like, you know, tonight. So unless you have, unless you wanna meet like two more times in the next two weeks, I don't.
What are we gonna be able to present at the town meeting than just our, our purpose?
You could do the purpose, you could.
Excuse me.
Let me pull up my notes. I think that's really, unfortunately, that's really all you can do. I mean, you just don't have other things that are, that are ready, unfortunately.
Yeah, the, the parts I really wanted to get to were, you know, we, we didn't get to, so.
I mean, you guys are still welcome to meet more than once a month over, over the next few months while you do this in preparation for a special town meeting. I think, um, you know, Mike, as the chairman in, as the board, if you all wanted to put together a proposal for the select board. On wanting to have a special town meeting specifically for zoning. So that the residents can really digest it and it'll give you time to really think it over. In the past, the select board has wanted to do it at annual. But I think because you have so many potential changes that you're making. It would, I think they would probably be amenable to doing it at a special because it would do all of them at once. And it would let anyone who has concerns about zoning come to that one meeting and it's, they're not gonna be trying to get through 20 articles. They're gonna be focused on the zoning. So I think you could put together that proposal and maybe that happens this summer or fall.
What do you think, Mike?
I feel like, I, no, that's better than rushing it, everything through. I just was hoping we have more ready for the town meeting than what we have.
I think, Mariah, if we took out the ADU section, in theory, we could approve the use table with the changes we've made so far.
I think so, as long as, let me just see. I don't know. Were there any other sections that you needed added definitions for? We have the marijuana ones. The definitions right here too.
You could add those to the appendix, so I think if you wanted.
Um, so I copied this wireless communication definition from Greenfields. I don't know that it's the language that you want, but it's something to start with. I wasn't really sure what to do about that. But in terms of the use table, you could take out the ADU changes. And then the only other changes you have, I think, are the marijuana ones. And we combined motels, hotels and, ands, which I need to go back and double check, but I think that's fine. Yeah, I think the only other changes were the marijuana ones.
And the, and the ADUs, the main thing is we need policy to go with. Like Deb said, how big they are and ownership and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, I guess the other change that you did make was the, having two family units. By right in Central Village and Village Residential. And then special permits for multi-units.
What's multi-unit? Is that like?
That's three plus.
Okay, was that, that was never there before or was it, no?
My under, I think it was multi-family dwelling down here. And that was special permit. And then no. And so you changed it to two, two families are more allowed. And then multi-units were special permit across the board. I can make this bigger. Sorry, I forgot that I shrunk it down again.
No, that, that's okay. So that would allow like a, a 10 apartment building by special permit. Is that right in one of those areas?
It could be, I mean, it could be four units, three units, or yeah, it could be more than that. If you wanted to make a range, like make it multi-unit three to seven. And then anything greater than seven is no. You could also do something like that.
I just, before what was, it would have been, I, I'm sorry, I, how many family? Was it prior to this change? Was it two or, or malt?
It was three. So you had multi-family dwellings, which was three plus units. But it was only allowed in Central Village by special permit. Everywhere else it was no.
And now we call it Maldy. The old one didn't really say. How many, it said Maldy family dwelling. And now we've changed it to Maldy unit dwelling and added three plus units.
So that was, I think, me trying to be clear, but I'm sure we have a definition in here of what multi-family means. So let's see.
I think it would mean two.
Well, it's a dwelling containing three, but not more than four dwelling units apparently. So three to four.
Okay. So. I, maybe we need an upper limit on that three.
Well, I think it would, it would just be three to four units, which is what is in the definition.
Okay. Alright. I'm okay with that. Would, would anybody else like to try to take the auxiliary dwelling units out? Or should we wait until we can get the? Do, do them both at the same, same time? We'd have to go back into this table and add them back in again.
Yeah, I mean. My thought is you're gonna have to have a public hearing each time you make changes. And having a whole public hearing for. These three changes and a purpose statement is, in my opinion, probably not worth it. Especially since we're on a tight timeline. So as much as I would love to see these changes happen sooner. I, I think it's gonna be a big push for a few changes when you could just wait.
Okay. Alright. Well, this is a big change in our direction, but could. Could we go back to the agenda just so I, I, I see if we're missing anything else?
While we're doing it, Mike, I'd like to say that. I think that if we accomplished a whole lot more. You know, ourselves and had a meeting and had everybody to get all of this. It would be taking care of the business all at one time. So I sort of like the idea of holding back a little bit and getting it all together.
I agree, Moonlight, and I think if it's maybe a bigger package that we're presenting, I wonder. I'm all about public input, so I wonder if we would get better public feedback. I'm a little afraid if it's just one or two things, the residents may just say, oh, I'm okay with that, so I don't need to attend that. Maybe if it's five or six or seven, they'll say, oh, I'm really, I'm into this. I wanna be there. I wanna hear, have my voice heard. So I think maybe that way we would get better input and better feedback at our public hearing.
I agree.
Alright. So I'll make a motion that we. Take a step back and try to complete. Projects for a special town meeting to review the zoning bylaws. Hopefully in the summer or fall.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Okay, so, Mike, you make the motion to slow down. What, what are the words?
We're gonna, I guess, try to get everything done that we want to present at. A special town meeting. And, and not be rushed to try to make the, this May date, which. We wouldn't be able to present very much, really.
So if that's the case, which you all just voted on it, I would recommend that. The planning board put together a memo to the select board asking if they would be interested in having, holding. A special town meeting later this year specifically for bylaw review. I know that the town clerk is working on codifying the bylaws. And that's a whole process that we'll have to go to a, a town meeting at some point. And so I know when I spoke to Brian about it, he had the idea of maybe combining. Some of the town clerk bylaw updates with zoning bylaw updates and we just have a whole bylaw themed party. And everyone shows up and voices their opinion. I'll get the pinata.
Isn't it thinking we have a map made, a zoning map pinata?
Yeah, it'll be the shape of Irving.
Stuffed with a little nips of booze.
Are we gonna put any locator flags on it so when you're blindfolded, you can try, try to hit certain spots?
It'll be a great time. Everyone from town will come.
So. I, I think some of the, and Mariah, you're gonna have your information for the. Lot sizes, I guess, for that meeting coming up. You're gonna continue working on what you wanted to work on, right?
Yeah, I mean, the lot sizes are really just you all making those decisions. I think if you, if you want to look into. I, I guess I encourage anyone who has kind of a pet project, like I know, Mike, you wanted to look at the special permit changes. And I know, Moonlight, you wanted to look at the noise bylaws. If, if you're interested in that, I encourage you to look, look up at what other towns are doing. Deb and I both looked up some examples of noise bylaws, which I can send out to you all. But if there are other things that you're interested in changing, like the lot, like I recommended the lot sizes. I can try to find a few examples of what other towns have. But I, I also recommend that you all just search what, what does Deerfield have for lot sizes? What does Northfield have for a noise bylaw? Deb's been doing a lot of that and it's really easy because everyone has to post their zoning bylaws.
Mentioned it, but the thing other towns do a lot of is reach out to the people to get input. Like you did with Sergeant Holtz today, you know, we should be doing more of that too. And that, and you can't do that and rush everything, so. On the other thing, I, I guess, new business is next Wednesday, I've gotta meet with Brian. And the French King Solar Project. They wanna. Make the connection to the solar. I sent you a copy of it. I don't know if anybody looked at it, but there was a nice map of the, the solar fields. And they're showing how big they are, but they wanna make the connection right at Route Two. And. I, our, our, I think our review said we didn't want him to do that. I, I haven't found the exact verbiage, but you're looking for the planning board to allow him to make the. I, I'd like to see what it looks like, you know, have him show other examples where they make that connection. Maybe you've seen him, Mariah. I, I don't know if I have.
Are you talking about like literally like the power connection?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. I don't have any experience with that, unfortunately.
Talking about. I'll find out more next Wednesday when I'm there. I don't want a great, big transformer thing looking at you when you just go right down Route Two there, but.
Where else would they connect?
I'm not sure. I, 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 I think we had them connect some distance from the road. But I, I, I gotta learn more what's going on. I, I really not sure. Brian made, anybody else that's available, you could come and visit. It's, I think it's 12 o'clock on next Wednesday.
Where?
Did you resend that email? I don't seem to have it.
Where?
We're meeting at the French King. I don't know exactly where, probably where that, you know, that little, you go past a police station and then you see that. Road that comes out, makes a circle. I think that's where we're meeting.
But how do you get there?
Um, right on Route 2. Let me, let me double check the time. I can send, I'll send, uh, yeah, let's, okay. I don't, I don't know if anybody else really, okay. It said, uh, one, one PM on Wednesday, February 17th. Is the purpose of the meeting is to review requirements for the interconnection path with the Amersco, the Irving Planning Board and Wood Civil Engineer. So, I, that's what I know right now. I can send you. Yeah, they, they sent a really nice picture of the solar fields.
Yeah.
But, oh, yeah, here's, here's a meeting location, I'm sorry, is right um, at the end of that road that you just had up there, Mariah, is at the
Yeah, I see it. Yeah, I see it now.
It's right there. So I don't, if, I don't even know what it, it, it looks like they're asking us to, for permission to do something we didn't allow them to do, and, uh.
Mariah, could you forward that to us? Cause I don't believe the planning board actually got copied on that.
No.
Sure, and I'd like to look at it a little closer.
I too.
I will send it to everyone. Uh, I'm not sure if everyone will have the attachments, though. Hang on one second. Yeah, I might have to forward it to you a couple different times because there, if I don't forward the actual email that has attachments, then it won't give you the attachments. So you're gonna have like three or four emails from me.
Getting something.
All right, good.
Mariah's going quickly through it.
Sorry, I'm looking for, um, the definitions. Does anyone else get like carsick when you're watching a screen scroll? Cause that's how I feel right now. Okay, uh, one thing I just wanted to look at was you guys already had a definition, I forgot about this until right now. You already had a definition for accessory apartments. Um, which you limited to no more than 800 square feet and occupied by no more than two people. Um, yours was not as specific as Greenfield's was, where they laid everything out, but I forgot that you already had language because you already had accessory apartments on your use table.
Well, that was nice. So now are you telling us we could have done it? Well, we probably need to look at.
You need something more specific, I think. Um, but you at least, I, I think it's worth noting you already had something in there. It's not totally new.
Right.
Brad, can you scroll down? Do we have a definition of a hotel versus an inn? I just, Bed and Breakfast just caught my eye. I know we were questioning that at one time.
Bed and Breakfast, which is a dwelling in which overnight accommodations are provided or offered for transient guests for compensation. And then you have a hotel, which is a building containing rooms used or designed to be used for sleeping purposes by transient guests where only kitchen and dining facilities are provided for public use. And then an inn is a historic structure used or designed for overnight lodging, um, which may also provide a restaurant. An inn shall be located in a building 50 years or more in age and guests may not stay for more than 90 days in any six month period. And then a motel is an attached, semi-detached or detached dwelling units having separate outside entrances, parking space convenient to each unit and providing lodging for transient clientele.
Okay, I guess by our definitions, they are all very different and distinct things.
Yeah.
I think you have them all zoned the same way anyways, so I don't think in Irving it makes that much of a difference. I'm imagining in a town that has a lot of old buildings, inns are probably in a certain area versus like a motel, which is more of a roadside motel, but realistically Irving, I mean, I guess somebody could do that, but we already have one motel and someone could put an inn in any building over more than 50 years old, so.
Well, our next meeting, I think I, was the third Thursday, would be March 17th. That's St. Patrick's Day. Oh, no, the 18th is, we, 17th is St. Patrick's Day, I guess, and the 18th.
I'll get a pinata for that, too.
The 18th is our, is our, uh, Thursday.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll draft a, a, a letter to, to the select board, asking them to consider a special town meeting later this year. And, uh, I guess if Mariah or Deb, one of you can find out more about the auxiliary dwelling unit things, that would be good.
I'm happy to reach out to Greenfield to get their language to copy and paste. Um, I would just ask that if, that if you all have specific concerns, that you research those concerns and come with kind of prepared examples or language or something like that.
Happy to.
Well, I think we, I mean, the one I would take out is the third or fifth, or whatever it was, a third of the square feet of the larger house. I mean, if someone has a, that was, that, that doesn't make any sense to me that someone can build a, you know, a mansion if they have a mansion.
Yeah, I think come with, come with things like that of, of just what you want to see taken out or added in or things you have questions about.
So I just want to throw it out there, knowing how much we still are looking at trying to do, and excuse me, and knowing we started this process back in August and weren't able to meet the town meeting goal because of how long it took, um, do we want to consider meeting a little more often?
What was that? Sorry, I think I talked over someone.
I would prefer to stay at our regular meetings on the Thursdays and try to do work in between if we can. I'll look at sections for the special permit and site plan. Those are, I guess, like Mariah said, things I really think need to be updated. Maybe Moonlight can look at his, uh, noise, and then Sun Hee, you were gonna look into the wireless communication.
I'm also gonna look up the trash.
So, Moonlight, I think the deal with the trash is that that belongs under the health, the Board of Health. I can, if you want to try to find some examples of other towns that have it in, under their zoning, I would recommend looking for that, but my understanding is that the Board of Health regulates that sort of thing.
Okay. Okay.
But I'm happy to look at any examples you find and see how that might work for us.
Okay.
And I will send out the examples of the noise bylaw that Deb found, or bylaws, I should say. Um, if you're going to plan on meeting once a month, I would just keep in mind that, I mean, we're looking at right now, three months out from whatever date, you know, it's February and we were just talking about how in May we would, you know, we need to kind of work three months out to get everything ready for the warrant. So if you're trying, you know, it's six months and then it's the middle of August. So it might only be three or four meetings before you have to have everything finalized again if we have a special town meeting at the end of the summer. So just keep that in mind, that if you want to make some of these changes, it, it might not be as long as you think.
I make a recommendation that we start out with the one meeting, but we will know by the next meeting that we have how much work we have to do. And maybe Deb, at that time, we will decide to add a couple more meetings to it because we'll know what, what we're up against. I, I, I think that starting at one meeting is a way to get started. Right now, I, I was caught up in the police chief thing and that took up a lot of time, and if we have any other committees going on, they may get in the way of some sort. So let's keep all of that in mind while we're doing this.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. The other possibility is if, if you do decide eventually that you want to have more meetings, you could devote a meeting per topic and get that topic buttoned up so that you're, maybe instead of having a two-hour meeting, you're having a 45-minute meeting, but you're, you're figuring out the entirety of the lot sizes that night, and then that's done.
That's a good idea. Be more specific, you mean? Yeah.
Okay.
And I would just say if we're gonna do that, I think whomever's topic is up for discussion that night. If, excuse me, if they could send out their information about a week in advance. Um, I know for me, it's a struggle to sit and read a giant bylaw in one sitting and then be expected to discuss and vote on it, so having it ahead of time would be really helpful.
Done. I agree.
Thank you, Moonlight.
Sounds good.
So the 18th is your next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, any other subjects that we need to talk about tonight?
I think of anything.
Well, thank you, and, uh, so I'll make a motion to close the meeting at 8:50.
Uh, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hey, Moonlight, how are you doing, buddy?
Uh, I'm doing okay. Thank you for the card. And, uh, I'm still dealing with, with the, with the, with my daughter's funeral, but the outpouring from the community is just overwhelming. I got, uh, 500 emails and about 40 cards sitting on my desk. You know, so flowers.
We all love you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
Big hugs.
Yeah.
Yes, big hugs.
All right. Bye, everyone.
Have a good night.
We'll see you guys. Be safe.